Effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the planning commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, April 29th at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, May 21st at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date and meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the planning commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the March 25th, 2024 meeting are included in the consent agenda. Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the planning commission or the audience. If any member of the planning commission or the audience would like to be heard on this item, please raise your hand and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the planning commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the March 25th, 2024 meeting. Item number two is conditional use permit 24-13 to transfer one building eligibility from tract one, Dygards addition, northeast quarter, southeast quarter, to tract two, Dygards addition, the east half, southeast quarter, all in section 31, township 104 North, range 48 West. That is in Logan Township. The petitioner is Marty Gullickson. Property owner is BG 250 LLC. The location is 24969 479th Avenue. Does anyone from the audience, the planning commissioner's staff wish to be heard on Item number three is conditional use permit 24-14 to make one building eligibility available on the property legally described as the west 330.84 feet, the southeast quarter, the southeast quarter. There is an exception of the south 658.32 feet, end of exception, section 16, township 102 North, range 48 West. That is in Brandon Township. The petitioner and the property owners are Randy and Joanie Hoffman. Location is approximately one mile north of Brandon. Anyone from the commission, the staff, or the audience wish to be heard on this item? Okay, so we'll move item number three to the regular agenda. Item number four is conditional use permit 24-15 to exceed 3,600 square feet of accessory building space requesting 7,888 square feet on the property legally described as tract three, Bowles addition, southeast quarter, northeast quarter, section 19, township 101 North, range 51 West. That is in Mall Lake Township. Petitioner and property owner is Tom Akanga and the location is 26541 461st Avenue. Anyone from the commission, the staff, or audience wish to be heard on this item? Item number five is conditional use permit 24-16 to transfer one building eligibility from the southwest quarter, the southeast quarter, to the southeast quarter, the southeast quarter, all within the north half vacant section line, ROW lying adjacent, and the southeast quarter. There is an exception of H-1 and exception of Rand addition, end of exception, section eight, township 101 North, range 52 West. That is in Wellington Township. The petitioner and property owner is Ronald Stofferan. That location is approximately six miles south of Humboldt on South Dakota Highway 19. Anyone from the staff, the commission, or the audience wish to be heard on this item? Item number six is conditional use permit 24-17 to transfer one building eligibility from the northwest quarter, the southeast quarter, to the southeast quarter, the southeast quarter, and to make one building eligibility available in the northeast quarter, southeast quarter, all within the southeast quarter. There is an exception of A parcel commencing at the southeast corner of said southeast quarter, thence north 31 rods, thence west 31 rods, thence south 31 rods, thence east 31 rods, to the point of the beginning, AKA lots one and two. There is an exception of east 31 rods, south 31 rods, and exception of RY, that's the end of exception. Section 15, township 102 North, range 47 West, that is in Red Rock Township. Petitioner and property owners are Greg and Laura Lindertz. Location is approximately three miles north of Valley Springs. Anyone from the commission, staff, or audience wish to be heard on this item? Item number seven, conditional use permit 24-18 to exceed 3,600 square feet of accessory building space requesting 5,529 square feet on the property legally described as tract 2A, Nussbaum's addition, north half, southeast quarter, section 31, township 103 North, range 47 West. That is in Palisade Township. The petitioner is Morton Buildings Incorporated. Property owner is Tim Akanga. Location 25567 485th Avenue. Anyone from the commission's staff or audience wish to be heard on this item? Item number eight is conditional use permit 24-19 to transfer one building eligibility from the northeast quarter, southwest quarter, to the northwest quarter, southwest quarter, all within the southwest quarter. There is an exception of Villasbeck addition, end of exception, section 22, township 103 North, range 47 West. That is in Palisade Township. Petitioner is Ed Davis. Property owner is Paul Sittig. Location approximately one mile southeast of Garrettson. Anyone from the commission, staff, or audience wishes to be heard on this item? Okay. Commissioners, we will be voting on all items except number three, which has been removed to the regular agenda.
Madam Chair. Becky?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item three.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and second to approve the items on the consent agenda except for item number three. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. If your item has been approved, you're free to go. We have moved item number three to consent agenda.
Kevin?
I'm Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This item is to make one building eligibility available on the property as you read it off earlier. Just for a note that's not necessarily in the staff report, if you look at density zoning was made established in 1989 and they made a lot of record at that time, be 1979 roughly in those years. And anything that was legally described or platted in between those dates and did not have a house placed on it at that time would receive a building eligibility but requires a conditional use permit to use it. And that's what we're at today is that this property was described during that time but requires a conditional use permit to use that building eligibility. The parcel is located in the agricultural area where multiple residential acreages are already developed, north of Brandon. I did visit the site in early April and there are no concentrated animal feeding operations in the area. For the conditional use permit criteria, I'll kind of cover through those quick here. Conditional use criteria one, the effect of the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses already permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. So this area is surrounded by agricultural land as well as the cluster of residential acreages. I'll kind of show the cluster zoomed out a little bit more. The placement of a single-family house should not negatively affect the neighboring property owners or the property values in the immediate vicinity. Number two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. Having a residential property on the site should have no negative effect to the normally orderly development of the area. Future development in the area is largely going to be dependent on the available building eligibilities and there are just not many left in this area to build on. So it's not likely going to change for some time. Number three, the utility access road drainage and/or necessary facilities are provided. The property will use the existing driveway. However, at this time, staff is unaware of any permanent easement on the property. I'm assuming there would be, otherwise this would be a difficult property to access. Having that permanent easement or at least proof of that easement should be a requirement of approval of the CUP. Any new utilities must be extended at the expense of the developer. Number four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. As a single-family dwelling, the off-street parking will be provided at the time of the house being constructed. Number five, that measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting inclusive of lighting signs so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The property is for building eligibility for the eventual construction of a single-family dwelling. Typically, single-family dwellings do not constitute nuisances. Any single-family dwelling in the property will have to meet requirements of the public nuisance ordinance going forward. And then number six, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. They should have little to no negative effect upon the proposed use in the area for the one building eligibility. The intent of the Vision 2035 Plan has the density zoning and this will not increase the number of dwelling units that are allowed in the section. Staff does recommend approval of conditional use permit 24-14 with two conditions. Number one, that a right-to-farm notice covenant shall be placed in the deed prior to issuance of the building permit for a single-family dwelling. And number two, that the property owner must provide staff with proof of access for the property prior to the issuance of a building permit for the single-family dwelling. I'll go over just a few photos that I took of the site. It's a little bit of a reverse order here. So this would be the main driveway into the property from the road. I kind of zoomed in there. You can see that it goes downhill back towards kind of a valley and the photograph, you can kind of see where there's a creek bottom there. This would show that the road exiting the driveway, you can see there's lots of other driveways on the property or nearby as the site is well-developed already. And on the backside, this would be the driveway for the existing house. You can kind of see that line of trees between the house and the rear property. It's probably easiest to see from this angle in the pictometry imagery, so I'll leave this up. As I noted, that there's a recommendation for approval and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for him?
I'm Randy Hoffman, Madam Chair. I have a document here of the easement, if you wanted to.
Do you have anything else to say since you're the petitioner? Will you please state your name and address, please?
Randy Hoffman. I'm at 213 South Sunset Drive, Brandon, South Dakota. My wife, Joanie.
Any questions for him? I guess not at this time. Is there anyone in the audience that cares to address this item? Will you please step forward and state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Jackie Meisenheimer, 48088 259th Street in Brandon. I'm an adjoining property owner. I'm here just because I was a little bit confused. Some of my questions have been answered already because it looked like there is an eligibility available, but it said to make one available, so it sounds like there's one back there. Just a couple of my concerns. I don't know the Hoffmans, but I'm assuming they're amazingly wonderful people. I actually had a fence panel that blew down when I was at work one day and he fixed my fence panel, my kids told me. But I just have a couple of little questions I need answered, I guess. I'm out there by myself. My husband has passed, so I'm really trying to keep the place up, keep everything like it needs to be. And I do have horses, so I have livestock that is going to be right to the right-hand side of his property as you're looking at it. And Kevin had just mentioned to me that they have to sign something that they know because this piece of property is kind of, it's like in the middle of a pasture. And the people on the west side of the property, wilds have had cattle over there. And so feasibly, there could be livestock on three or four sides of this housing eligibility. As long as the awareness is all there. One other little concern I have is the snow removal because the 33-foot easement for the driveway going back in there starts at my property line where I have the driveway going back and then I have a horse fence I put up. So I don't know, like removing snow from an eighth to a quarter of a mile, where that's going to go because I can't really have it pushed onto my horse fence, have my horse pushed over, horses fences pushed over. I'm just kind of concerning some of the logistics of that. And then now there's a lot of houses being built in the country and I've been out here for 29 years now. Everybody wants to move out to the country and have their little piece of quiet. But a lot of these houses being built have these huge LED lights surrounding all the properties, so I'm a little concerned about light pollution. And a lot of people like to move in the country so they can have all the dogs they want. The house, well, most likely, there's really been only one area on the property you can put a house because the whole bottom two and a half acres fills with water on rainy years. But it won't be that far from where my horses are. So I just need the planning or whoever to know that this is an ag area. Also on the bottom of the creek, I don't know if this is going to affect the hunting or not, but my grandson does some pheasant hunting and we do a little bit of archery deer hunting down there, not a lot. But I kind of try to maintain my creek bottom for the animals down there a little bit. I don't know if the placement of the houses, we don't do anything with rifle back there, so that 660 yards shouldn't be an issue. But just a few little things that I really just felt I wanted to bring up. If it was an automatic push-through or not, I had no idea, but thank you.
Mr. Hoffman, can you address any of the questions she might have had?
As far as snow removal goes, I haven't been out there last year. We haven't built, so I don't know what the snow is going to be like. Removal wise, it'll have to go one way or another, you know, west or east. I guess depending upon the way the wind's blowing. I haven't really been out there to find out, I guess, you know, it's the same in town or out of town, whether it be right or left, you have to go somewhere with the snow. I definitely try to maintain as much dignity to her as I have in the past. The bottom line, like she said, it's not wet this year, so I've been doing a lot of just clearing of broken-down trees, that sort of thing, in the back of it. We do have two dogs, so I'm not bringing a whole herd of dogs out or anything, but we do have two dogs that'll be bringing us out. The reason we're moving out there is my wife's parents are getting elderly and we want them to move in with us out there. So we're trying to maintain the level that they can sufficiently walk around and get around okay on. We're a two-story in town, so they're not able to do any stairs, so that's the reason that we're going out. Yeah, I don't know what else to tell you other than as far as when we get there, I guess we'll know, but you know, I've met Jackie, she's a great lady, so hopefully we'll get along just great.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else who cares to address this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
John Erdel, 48278 259th Street, Brandon, directly to the south of the property. Purchased my lot about three years ago at auction and within the month of closing, post-closing and moving in, the 10 neighbors that you see on the southeast section and the northeast section gladly introduced themselves and at least six or eight of them with their second sentence of introducing themselves said, "Do you know that we used to dump all of our trash back there?" So come to find out that there's three, likely three closed-in dumps or filled-in dumps and one that's open. There's definitely organic matter on top and non-organic matter underneath, but you can see the dump to the south of the creek there a little bit on the north side. So my only main concern or question is what happens or, you know, where those three were. Nobody exactly knew where for 30 to 40 years. There were no dump service or trash service, so this is right after the EPA was getting fired up in the 70s. So I'd had some pretty serious concerns with that lot last year when I was looking at purchasing it. Just concerned that if anything gets dug up, that it gets properly taken care of and I don't know if there's anything else that needs to be done prior to, but six to eight people on, what's the word? I didn't ask for anything, they just, second sentence, "Did you know we dumped all our trash back there for 30 to 40 years?" So nobody could give me the exact locations of where the filled-in ones were, but that was my main concern in regards to doing anything back there, so. Oh, and then to follow up on the snow, on the easement there between the fences and by the arena, the horse arena on the northeast side, last year we got up to here, so looking like up to five foot. My snowmobile that I had to buy so I could move around got some air.
Anyone else who cares to address this item?
I guess, Madam Chair, if I may. If I think about this, you know, again, as we are embodied, here's a panel to look at appropriate land use. It really does feel like there's inappropriate land use and it feels like there's a good relationship here already that's existed among the neighbors, maybe a little bit of fear of the unknown, but I think that sounds like something that everyone's wanting to work towards together. So I guess with that said, I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second that with just a comment of an acknowledgement. I think one issue that wasn't directly addressed by the petitioner, but might answer one of the neighbor's concerns was just that this continues to be zoned A1 agriculture with the expectations that there's agriculture nearby and then that's the right-to-farm notice covenant that would be acknowledged by the petitioner. So I think that was one outstanding item that maybe hadn't been addressed, but happy to second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and second to approve conditional use permit 24-14. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Move on to old business?
So under old business, I... Under old business, I will report that our subcommittee met on April 10th and we had a very good discussion about the continued development of accessory dwelling units and how we maybe can allow those to accommodate those within our zoning ordinance and all the ramifications that might occur with the use of those. And I will also indicate that we have another meeting scheduled for May 8th and that meeting will be in this room because three of you, two planning commissioners and Bonnie is the chairperson, are attending these meetings. So we've had very good discussion. Our next meeting, we will be discussing some tweaks that we maybe can take to building eligibilities and how we transfer those and what we may be able to do to address opening them up for further development, some ideas we have, also some potential development on further allowing maybe some higher-density developments if you meet certain parameters. So we've had very good meetings and I guess I would also ask if our two planning commissioners that serve on the board, if they have anything else they'd like to add or if our chairperson, Bonnie, would like anything else to add to what I've reported. But I just wanted to make a quick report on where we have been with our task force, subcommittee.
Adam or Mike? I'm just sitting there as an ex officio. I'm just, I kind of wanted to see what you guys would bring to the table.
I guess I'll just say the accessory dwellings, we talked about that for the last probably meeting and a half. I think it was pretty productive, I guess, I would say, anyway, on coming up with some new regulations for that or whatever we have to, ordinances for that. So I think it's gone along pretty well for that part of it.
Well, and potentially we'll add some, it may relieve some of the housing issues that sometimes come up, just like we just heard this gentleman had an elderly parent and we run into that a lot where we have elderly parents or children with disabilities or, and there's just a number of scenarios that sometimes pop up that we can address and we'd be looking at doing this like through a conditional use permit. So we, once this is concluded, we will make a presentation to the planning commission in conjunction with how this might be included in our comprehensive plan and IE also zoning ordinance. So if Mike has anything else to add?
No, I think you did a great job, like I said.
I think there was pretty good discussion from the people that we brought in. I think that's a key to that kind of thing, whether it's development or, you know, you commissioners or somebody without the realm of just being right here.
And I think we have some good representation from the ag community, from the business and industry and so, because I think that it affects multi-levels of residences, businesses, farmers, I mean, farmers are businesses too. So, I mean, it's all the business community in that farm business and other businesses,
Okay, I guess we'll move on to new business. Kevin?
All right.
All right, uh, so in the new business here today, um, I worked through the transportation chapter. Uh, to kind of update uh, maps and update figures and that sort of thing with the comprehensive plan. Um, so I'll kind of hit up some of the highlights here in the PowerPoint. Uh, so in our comprehensive plan, uh, we have these chapters here available. Uh, and we're looking right now at transportation. Uh, the remaining uh, chapters from here on out, uh, are going to need more input from this density zoning. In order to, to kind of tweak those chapters, so uh, it, it might be a little while before we get the next kind of update. Um, for the comprehensive plan uh, chapters. Um, inside the transportation chapter, there are these sections, rail, highway, transportation system, functional classification, non-motorized, access management, air traffic. Uh, I will note that uh, as I go through this, like beginning with rail. Um, uh, rail is an important part of uh, the, the transportation network. Um, it, but it also is a part that we as a planning and as a county have honestly very little to do with. It's largely uh, governed through state and federal um, locations. Uh, but it is good to keep it on the radar, so that way we know where things are going in the future. Uh, and you know, as I'm, as we're writing this, there's kind of this on-again, off-again talk about uh, uh, Amtrak coming to, to the area. So that's always kind of an up-in-the-air thing um, with rail. And they can see the current rail access here. Um, this is what it looks like in the county where we have rail uh, going through the county. Um, I will note that I looked up the rail numbers for the county, I, so this is the rail volume going through. We have a lot of rail volume going through the county, um, uh, coming in and out, uh, as you can see here. And that has increased over the years and our, our expected increase over the years. Uh, so there might be more demand on rail. Um, stepping right forward through uh, the transportation classification map. So this was updated from the previous uh, map. Uh, several kind of minor highways have been updated into this, uh, that were not included in the previous map. For some reason, there was a section of highway right here that was kind of missed, so that was kind of reclassified into this. But then you can see we put in like Slip Up Creek, um, uh, there was a couple other, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. Uh, but updated them in this map here, um, you may see like the highway department. Uh, go through a functional classification system for like roadway usage on how many cars per day or how much uh, truck traffic is going to go into the road. Uh, in the comprehensive plan, the function of the map is a little bit different. One of the primary functions of the map is to determine uh, where the uh, right-of-way needs to be for these uh, roadways. Because they are going to be a heavier traffic right-of-way. Uh, so on a typical roadway section, you're looking at sixty-six feet of right-of-way for a section line right-of-way. But a collector's street in the functional roadway requires a hundred feet of r- right-of-way. So if you plat a piece of property along a county highway that does not have that full right-of-way. Uh, you may be looking at, at putting some of that plat into right-of-way as part of your kind of platting requirements. Um, eh, so minus two sides of the highway, a hundred feet wide. So that might subtract seventeen feet off of the kind of the front of your property if you're working along the highway sort of thing. So that's something to make sure that's clear in the, the plan and it wasn't necessarily clear in the plan last time, even though it was always used in that manner. Through the subdivision ordinance. Um, there's uh, some of you kind of remember uh, David Heindl. Uh, and he worked very hard on the non-motorized portion of the, the comprehensive plan, uh, nearly ten years ago now. And uh, so that has largely remained the same. Uh, and I would note that when we look at our transportation map that has worked a little bit with the highway department. And was determined to keep it the way it is for now. But you'll see that it has been updated with new roads from, in the municipalities. And then I would also note that some of the, the work that David did and, and kind of were uh, describing out the rumble strips. Within the uh, larger shoulders to accommodate bike traffic as shown in this photo here. Uh, some of that has already happened, I mean, the highway department is working with the wider shoulders and the rumble strips to keep safety. Of kind of the multi modes of traffic uh, throughout the county as they work in the projects going forward. So, so uh, that really is going to be, kind of remain an ongoing part of the, the plan moving forward in our update. Um, access management, uh, that was a big part of the plan la- uh, the last time. Uh, but since then, in two thousand and nineteen, the highway department did uh, create an access, access management plan. And that is available online, it was approved, our policy, and that is uh, done in two thousand and nineteen. So uh, about halfway point between uh, when the plan was written and now. Uh, and that has been very important to know that how many driveways, you know, we just saw that here today, how many driveways can you put on a highway? Uh, what is the safe amount of driveways and when do you need to start combining driveways or moving them to side streets? That sort of thing to, to allow traffic to move freely. And then air traffic, uh, that was uh, adjusted a little bit from the last time, but not much. Again, it's an area that we don't have a lot of control over unless there is kind of a request for more uh, airfields. Uh, because the Sioux Falls Regional Airport has their own planning. Um, they have, uh, that we do have a, a airport zone uh, just outside of the airport. Although in the county, there's not a lot of that in the county. Uh, but if all you remember, there was a request for a new airstrip. And uh, we need to be cognizant of, of any new air facility requests uh, to be, that we're not getting in the way of existing operations elsewhere. Most of the regional airstrip as well as other airstrips. And I guess that's where I kind of ended my highlights tour and I did send out the plan for you. Um, hopefully y'all got that and kind of were able to glance through that or read through that, and is there any questions?
Any questions for him?
I got one, Madam Chair. I was just wondering about setbacks like a, where you have two highways intersecting each other, do they need to be, look at moving farther setbacks? So in case they ever need to expand the intersection, make it wider, turning lanes and all that, do we need to, or is there something already in place for that?
So you're thinking like uh.
I'll just say like Crooks, for example, south there, where they don't put that roundabout in there, but they couldn't do it because the house was so close to intersection there.
Uh, I, I guess that's not currently part of the plan to increase setbacks. The current setback is uh, uh, fifty feet from the right-of-way. And uh, we do get pushed back on that fairly often, that why is it fifty feet? Well, because you can always, uh, some future day when we need an extra seventeen feet beyond where we're at. Uh, that way you're not further encroaching onto the house or structure. Um, but no, there hasn't been anything yet and I guess we can look into that more.
Okay, I was just wondering, I mean, that was one example I was thinking of there and I know there's a few others where you got two major highways meeting each other. And I'm sure there'd probably be future growth, I'm just thinking like around Crooks there, you know, there's going to be more and more around there, so that's why I was just kind of wondering.
Sure.
Any other questions for him? Thanks, Kevin. Okay, any other new business? You don't take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, everyone.